Father can all come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearing has been made in second. It's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. We have one joint poll location, Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated, for new jointly owned poll locations and relocations as follows. President Avenue and North Main Street, one new jointly owned poll location, two jointly owned poll locations, and one solely owned poll relocation. North Main Street, install one jointly owned poll on President Avenue, relocate one solely owned on North Main Street, relocate two jointly owned polls on North Main Street, National Grid to relocate three polls, two jointly owned and one solely owned, and set one new jointly owned poll on North Main Street at President Avenue due to the reconstruction of the intersection. Poll forty will move six feet west, poll forty-one to anchor and anchor will move six feet southwest, and poll forty-one dash one will move twelve feet south. Poll thirteen dash fifty, President Avenue, is the new set that will better service Riverside Gas Station on the northeastern corner of the intersection, in accordance with Plans number three zero seven five two seven seven five. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? We have one proponent, please come down, give your, state your name and address for the record, and just tell us why we should support this, please.
My name's Aaron Roy, twelve fifty Brayton Point Road and Somerset National Grid. The purpose of this project is for the reconstruction of the intersection at North Main Street and President Ave, the wide ending, the intersection, which would put our poles in the road, so for each of the two jointly owned poles, we'll move approximately six feet into the new sidewalk, and on the opposite side, twelve feet south of poll forty-one dash one. The new poll, poll thirteen dash fifty, like the note read, will better service the Riverside Gas Station on the northeast corner. The transformers are currently located on poll forty-one. If we relocate them to poll thirteen dash fifty, which is the new poll, it would reduce the amount of wire crossing the intersection, as well as better service the gas station as well, so that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Hearing, any opponents?
Motion to close hearing?
Second.
Motion, there being no opponents, motion to close public hearing has been made in second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Six o'clock?
Yep.
Has anyone signed up for citizens input time? There being no president sign off for citizens input time, we'll begin with Committee on Finance, unless someone needs to take a break. Counselor C two, Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know there was a citizens input that was written from a member of the, yep, Health Insurance Board, I can't think of the name right now. The fact that they're a member of that board, should that be read into the record?
I don't know.
It's in regard to the, to...
What's that?
Yeah, for the pension, for funding of the pension liability, et cetera?
I think he asked that I forward it to members of the council, which I did.
Okay.
What's that?
Yep.
City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item number two, since item number one is citizens input time, no one signed up, item number two is discussion with the administration regarding park fee revenues being directed to the Park Division budget. For discussion purposes, could you please come down? This was referred on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Counselor C six, Counselor Vice President, prayer.
Yeah, I put that resolution in to come to finance. Many times, I mean, we've done more parks and playgrounds and have added to it, but we really haven't added a whole lot to the budget to take care of that. And when people use different services at the Park Department, that money goes into general fund. Why isn't it going into the Park Department to help them with the maintenance of the parks? It should be going to them. I know, you know, they rent parks for different events, and we should have it going back to them.
So I can respond if you're...
Sure can.
Oh, sorry. Is there any other?
You might.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
So, when you, when this was referred, I did take a look at the last five years, and the park revenues are about ten thousand dollars. The high in twenty twenty was eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. In essence, in my opinion, we are, because we're funding more than that to the parks, than just the ten thousand.
You are, and I would say, continue to fund what you fund, but give them what they get too. So you put them at a higher, you know...
And I believe that we, I mean, we are looking at other resources. We've allocated ARPA funds specifically to parks to help...
No, and I agree, but ARPA funds, you and I both know, that's gonna go away.
It's going away, yeah.
And, you know, you don't even have enough manpower there to keep, you know, to keep the lawn mowed in the, in the spring and the summertime. It's difficult for them, plus the islands that they do around the city, and people want the parks to look nice, they want them to be clean. I just think that you need to give them more money, whether you do it this way or through the budget, they need more money to make sure that it's kept up. I mean, I've had people complain about litter barrels not being emptied out frequently enough. Well, I don't know about frequently enough, because I think that they do. I'm glad to see that people are using the barrels, because that's a plus, better than seeing litter strewn around the parks. But that's just my thought, trying to get them a little bit more money, because we do have more parks and playgrounds that we're taking care of now. I mean...
And I, and I do believe that our new Director of Operations is looking at a whole plan for the parks, and we are looking to, you know, try to use all sorts of funding resources to get more money into the parks, so...
Okay, I'll go with that, but I just know that they need it. With that, I yield, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other further questions for the park, for the administration regarding the parks and the funding? Counselor C two, Counselor Dion?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, so is it consistent that it's ten thousand every year, or?
I can...
I'm sure it has to vary according to, I don't even know who, what people pay for, other than people who've had carnivals in the parks, or something like that.
So twenty-two was nine thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-one was ten thousand six hundred and fifty-nine, twenty was eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-two, and nineteen was ten thousand two hundred and ninety-three. I mean...
And nothing in twenty-three?
Well, as of today, is nine thousand four hundred and ninety-three.
Oh, I missed that one. Okay, thank you, that I yield.
Thank you. There being no further questions, we'll go on to item number three. Oh, sorry, Counselor C three, Counselor Kilby?
On number three, please.
Okay.
Counsel President.
Item number three, a discussion with the representatives from the administration regarding the Bank Street Armory Municipal Veterans Memorial, referred May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, we're gonna hold discussion. Counselor C three, Counselor Kilby?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm gonna entertain a motion to table on this, Counsel President, at this point. The mayor appointed a committee, actually, Counsel President asked me to serve on it, and I agreed. And our first meeting meeting is Thursday at ten o'clock, so I'm respectfully asking my colleagues to table this. It's a committee of really highly qualified individuals who know Fall River, know the history of the armory, so I'd be, I'd like to table this, Counsel President, in order to have the meeting...
Pretty good.
...and put this on the agenda for our next meeting, so I hope I get a second.
Second?
Motion has been...
There's a motion on it to table.
Motion, if there's, I'd like a second, please.
You got a second, she, Counsel motion seconded.
So no discussion?
Well, we're gonna vote on it, Counsel.
No discussion, I'm the one that put in the resolution.
I'm, I wanna vote on it.
But don't even get to address it.
Just let my counselors know, I was not aware that it was gonna take place on Thursday. If I had, I wouldn't schedule it on this meeting, but since that's the case, the motion has been ta, counse, to table.
And it's a feasible, I'm sorry, Counsel President, it's a feasible, feasibility today, you know?
We understand.
So it's, knowledge is power, so we just wanna see what we have to do.
Roll call on tabling the issue. Ma'am clerk?
I'm gonna object. I'm gonna object.
On the motion to table, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Object.
So we have for the next meeting?
Ma'am clerk? Actually, I'm sorry. Item number four, discussion with representatives from Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the city administrator, and the city engineer for the general update on Route seventy-nine, Deval Street Corridor Improvements Project, referred on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, we'll hold discussion. If you can just introduce yourselves for the record, and what department you work, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. I'm Dan Aguirre, the Director of Engineering and Planning, also the city engineer. Here this evening with me is also Valerie Kilduff, and I will allow her to introduce herself as well.
Good evening, I'm with Mast Dot. I am the project manager for the Fall River project for Mast Dot, and I'm here to, I guess, answer some questions, if I can.
Yeah, basically, I filed the resolution, because I was getting questions from a number of people, and some people can go online and see what the plan is, and other people find it a lot easier to see what the real thought is at the city council chambers by the administrations at Mast Dot. Could you just give us a brief understanding of who owns the property right now? I believe it's the state's property, not the city's property, correct, Route seventy-nine? And then, just, what we wanna know is just, who and how will that land be distributed going forward? Who's gonna have control over it? Will it go to the City Council Committee on Real Estate? Will it go to the city administration? Will it go out to bid from the state? Will the state entity have something to do with it? If you could just give us an overhaul of how that land will get divvied up and what the intentions and the plans are.
Let me take it first?
Sure.
Sure. So, the way that the project is set up right now, all of the land is still owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, at least the portion that is the elevated portion of Route seventy-nine with the overpasses that has just come down. There were portions of Deval Street that are part of a state highway layout system that are either jurisdictional or non-jurisdictional. What that means is there's a portion that DOT would always be responsible for, as far as repair and permitting, and there were sections that were the responsibility of the city. There is also a city roadway layout that governs the outsides of Deval Street that are at the lower levels of the corridor itself. But currently, with the land being owned by Mass DOT, there has not been a specific designation of what body that land will be transferred into, whether it would be the city directly, Real Estate Committee, Redevelopment Authority, that has not been determined. And that, really, there's been no conversation since I've been here to determine where or what the possibilities are. This is still probably, although you see a lot of work being done quickly now, that's a lot of the big work, we're probably two to three years away from that conveyance and determining where it will be going and getting through that process. So right now, all the exciting stuff is done. Moving forward, there'll be a lot of painstaking utility, relocations, that will probably take us through, you know, a good portion of the remainder of this construction season before you start seeing pretty things. We all like to see pretty things. So this is now going to go into the more difficult time. What I can offer is that, on behalf of the city, we meet with all of the project proponents, Mass DOT, the design engineers, the contractor, on a weekly basis, and I can tell you that everyone involved in that team has been fantastic to deal with, very responsive. I get a call with regards to traffic, or someone having a concern, I relay that to Val and the rest of the team, and they immediately hop on it the same day, or at least, or at least tomorrow. So if the question again is back to who is going to get that land at some point in time, and how will it be developed, that has not been determined at this time, at least not to my knowledge.
Thank you, Counsel in seat number two, Counselor Dion?
Hi, good evening, thank you. I don't know if it still stands as it did a few, a couple of years ago. In the Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan, it was pretty well spelled out that once this work was completed, there would be ten parcels of land that would be available for development, that the RDA would be the entity who would determine who would get each parcel of land, including an acre of land that will be connected to the pier. There'll be, so it'll be the pier plus an acre of land, because that whole side is gonna be all waterfront property, there won't be any travel on that side. So again, I don't know if that's been changed, but I do know that the original Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan, that was the intention.
So what I can offer is that, there are in fact ten parcels. Not all of them are developable. There are drainage parcels, or parcels that are specific for drainage purposes, or some for utilities, but there are ten. Currently, the way that it's been laid out, the six or seven developable parcels, they are larger. That doesn't mean that they can't be broken up into smaller and get disposed of. That plan just came out, I think, just a couple of weeks ago, after we had asked, just preliminarily, so that we can start planning, what are the sizes, actual, you know, dimensions and areas of the developable portion of these pieces? So that we've just received recently.
Right.
I do know that the Redevelopment Authority has, always in the process of seeking a funding source for a master plan for that whole area. Again, the Redevelopment Authority is not, you know, it's not the city of Fall River.
That's right.
It's a quasi-government agency that I deal with on occasion, but I'm not privy to all, all that they do. They do ask for our opinion, and we give it, but I'm not, I'm not up to speed with all of the intricate details of where they're at. But I do know that that funding source request, this plan, for instance, that we're speaking of, was needed to move forward with, with that request. So I can't tell you that that is in the works.
Yeah, because in addition to that, there were a number of properties that were under, that potentially could have been taken by eminent domain, by the RDA. Some of those properties were taken out of the plan. People were given the option of upgrading their properties so they could stay as they are.
Yep.
So I know the original number is lower than what it used to be. Again, I don't know what the number is, I'm not involved in that anymore, but I know that that also existed. So I guess that's pretty much all I have to contribute. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel President Kamara?
Thank you. So, you said earlier that it could go to the city, or it could go to the city council?
Or, maybe on real estate.
Right, that's what I meant.
I don't know. In some, some form or fashion, those three bodies and the Redevelopment Authority will have their hands in what happens and who this goes to, I'm assuming.
So, from the state, you're from the state, correct?
Yes.
What is, what, how do you see it?
Typically, what happens with these is, we would finish the project, and then we go through what we call a, basically, we turn it over, but it's a whole process.
When you say you finished the project, what is that detail? Does that mean the roadway, the infrastructure?
That means the whole project is complete.
But you're not gonna divide up the land, correct?
No, not us.
So you're just gonna do the construction, underground, utilities, all of the work?
Yep, and we will leave it as a...
The roadway.
...a big green parcel for you all to deal with. But what happens is, we have, there's a memorandum of understanding that gets signed by the city and Mass, Mast Dot, where we call it a discontinuance, and, because we're discontinuing the state layout and handing it to the city. And that's a whole legal process that has to happen after the project is complete. And we have started talking, like, as Dan alluded to, as to how this is going to, to happen, but there's no, there's been no paperwork, no paper trail right now, because it's a couple of years in the future, as Dan talked about, also...
Couple of years in the future, but you already started to talk about it, and I like that, because that's why I filed a resolution, I think we should all be talking about it.
Well, because a discontinuance takes, it does take, it is a legal process, and it also, a lot of times, never happens. Now, you guys are in a situation where you want it to happen, because you want that, that developable property. Typically, when we enter into these, that's not the case, that people are...
Who's taking part in those discussions, if you don't mind me asking?
Right now, there, there, there's only been, honestly, a discussion on how we were gonna do it. So what, like Dan had said, they needed to have the pieces of, they wanted to see what the properties were that were gonna be left. It will, it will take place with Mast Dot, some form of your...
So the discussion taking place so far has been with the city and the state?
Yes, but federal highway will be involved...
I'm sure.
...as well, because federal, because it is a federal highway.
Yep.
Funds were used to create it, so they have told us that they will be involved with the discussions as well.
But this won't cost the city any money, will it, to obtain the land?
I have no answer for that.
Maintenance problem?
Is that historically what happens?
For the discontinuance?
Yeah.
Depends on the level of, what the type of road it is, and like I said, federal highway is involved, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen with federal highway. They have been on the outskirts of this, and they only recently have said that they're gonna be involved with the process, because they are gonna have to sign off as well, so...
So you're gonna do all the infrastructure work, put the roadway in, leave us a big lot of green grass or un-green grass?
Let's hope not, green grass, let's hope not.
Green grass.
Lots of landscaping is happening.
And then the city will, the city will decide how it's gonna divvy up the properties?
The city will be responsible for that, yes.
How many streets or roadways are gonna put in? Is it gonna be like, just one major artery going through there, or are you gonna put in, cross?
We are reconnecting...
Yeah.
...a bunch of your roadways that have been separated out. I don't have a plan with you, but...
I can explain it all, because I know it so well.
Yeah.
So, so first of all, not that Valerie needs me to, to defend some of her comments, but Valerie is the project manager for the construction activities taking place now.
Okay.
Nothing having to do with the high-level questions that, that you're potentially seeking answers to.
No, no, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're well aware of what's happening from the beginning, as a city is...
But this is the beginning...
Okay.
...of that, of that part of it.
Perfect.
So, in a nutshell, and we all know the city very well, the final project, let's start from the north end of the project. Brightman Street, as it currently exists now, will become a two-way again, where it comes out to Lindsay, and will now extend through Deval Street North, a much fancier, prettier new Deval Street North, continue across the open spans which used to be the elevated seventy-nine...
Yep.
...through to seventy-nine, or, sorry, Deval Street...
On the other side.
...south.
Sure.
And those two intersections will be signalized intersections. So that's the first connecting point, that brings the north end of the city through this corridor over to the water side of this project of Deval Street.
Okay.
Coming back from that way, there will be another crossing at, I believe, the next one is, is Cory going all the way through, or does it go straight to President? President.
I think it's President.
President Avenue would be the next one. So between President and Brightman, that's actually the largest developable parcel.
Okay.
So then President Avenue will go through, again, very similarly, the way that it does now, intersections, you know, signalized at each, again, widened, prettier, shared walkways, new landscaping, drainage, CSO improvements.
Okay.
Then we move down Turner Street, which comes out currently now at the new Bay Coast Bank and apartment building. That will now continue straight through as well, all the way to Deval Street South, again, signalized at, at both intersections.
Okay.
And then just, just north of that is where the train station sits currently now.
Okay.
Then we will move further down to where the southern U-turn exists now, basically in front of the Cove, where we dive down over the overpass now. That will be reconstructed with the new bridge coming down, and that street will also be the fourth connector, bringing the southerly end of the site over and through. So there'll be four connecting streets, all signalized, that will provide access for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles.
Okay. One last question, show me, guys, other questions, though. As far as parking goes...
Yep.
Are we considering any type of parking garage anywhere on the new land that's being developed, or battleship parking lot area? Is there any talk about having parking down there at all?
Yes, in, in multiple locations. So in the short term, during construction, because a bunch of the parking along Deval Street was, has been impeded due to construction, we're in the process of creating some potential parking solutions to, to that area, that we should have resolved within the next thirty days, to help us through the construction time period. Long term, yes, the independent parcels themselves, and some of the ones that may not be considered developable for other uses, we are looking into providing municipal parking facilities through some of that area, as well as down below the battleship and under the, the bridge. There are a few Mass DOT-owned parcels down there now, there's a little triangle, the one that we work with when we have the campground people and the Boy Scouts go to the battleship. So we're in the process of hopefully acquiring some of those to provide some additional parking and other parcels south of that. So yes, there will be, there will be an influx in the creation of municipal parking.
Like a parking, a parking garage, or just an area where they can park?
Those under the bridge, because they're, they're limited by height, those would be at grade. All of the individual parcels themselves, those will most likely have their own garages. But yes, we would be looking at, in a few strategic locations, there is room for us to provide either at-grade or deck parking as well. The discussions that we have had with is just, just creating a parking deck without a building above it isn't the greatest thing to look at when you're looking through this corridor and the types of things that we want to do. So what'll end up happening for the, I think the kind of development that we're going to be looking for, there will be most likely, you know, a deck or two underneath some of these buildings that we see constructed through that area.
What type of development are you looking for down there? Are we talking hotels, restaurants?
I have my own opinions, but you know, I'm only part of a team of many people, but yes.
So who decides now? That's a big part of this.
Well, in general, so I know the redevelopment authority through this master planning process, and that's just what they've just started now, is to look at and hire a consultant to have come down and look and say, okay, what is the viability of this? Could we support one hotel? Could we support two hotels? How many units of residential housing could we support down in this area? What types of retail? On what floors? Just the first floor? Or could you see a multi-story retail facility?
Is there a high restriction on any multi-stories that are going to go down there?
Currently now, under the current zoning, what would happen is in the way that this was laid out.
Six stories?
Yes. So this, this portion of that area falls under the W T O D zoning district, the Water Transient Orientated Development, which sits now currently on the westerly side of Deval Street. So if nothing was done, that entire area would fall under the development, the zoning development requirements of what that is, which allows for a six-story building. You could go higher with a special permit under current zoning, but we're looking at potentially, at least for site development purposes, looking at different landscaping provisions, parking requirements, to incorporate different zoning requirements to have developers meet a higher standard than even what our W T O D zoning district allows.
What's the zoning for podcasts, residential or condos?
The difference is, it's greatly difference in that district. For instance, if you have an apartment building that has over 20 units, they require parking at a rate of 1.25 spaces
per unit.
Without hitting that threshold. So it's to promote, you know, buildings with higher densities. It's two parking spaces per unit.
Is that what this is currently in place now for that district?
That's currently what's there now. It's for, if you're under 20 units, two units, two parking spaces per unit. If you exceed the 20 units, then you can break it down to 1.5 or 1.25. There are, I think there were three different thresholds and, because as you increase units, you do need a less density or, you know, required density for parking.
All right. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now, but I'm glad we started the conversation and please keep us abreast of anything that's
We will. And I know, and I go, I mean, everybody has busy schedules. Every time DOT does a, a public offering, which they've already done too, mostly to inform the public of, hey, what can you expect traffic-wise or? So we've had two of these already and I do think the invites go out. So they're very quick. They're usually in the evening. They are recorded, I believe. So you can log on to the state's website
Yeah, this
for this specific project and you can see them. Even if you're just looking at pictures, there's a wealth of knowledge in just looking at pictures and not even reading anything.
The battleship parking lot area, is that under the state's domain or under ours?
The, the one that's currently, that is under the, that's under the state. I believe it's DCR.
Is it possible to put a municipal parking garage on that?
No, we don't. We wouldn't have the rights to the land with DCR and the environmental requirements for how that was originally permitted would make that very difficult to do.
All right. Because someone mentioned to me that that would be the best spot and I don't think we own the land.
Well, no, I mean, it's, when you look at what would a parking deck look like down there, you know, potentially blocking, you know, a view of a carousel or a battleship. So you have to look at the surrounding areas, although if you look at it as a, as a flat piece of paper and you see a square, yeah, that would be a great place because it is a location that's needed.
Right.
But there are multiple at-grade locations down in that end that we are working on.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Counsel seat number one, Counsel Kadim.
Thank you. I applaud my colleague for putting this forward and I, I think that the conversation needs to be had in terms of the master planning, because I think that's the key component of it. So if we can figure out, you know, through the administration, what it's going to be looking like, because regardless of what transpires, it still has to come back to the legislative body for acceptance. So it's coming back to the city council for acceptance of the property. So now, to make that determination as to whether it goes to the redevelopment authority or stays at the city council level for development, you know, I think a master plan is absolutely needed and getting a firm to come in here and tell us what's viable, hotels, residential units, mixed use, things of that nature, makes the most sense so that we're all on the same page. We have the input. We know the data that's behind all the decision-making process and then we can make the, a more educated decision as to whether it makes more sense with the redevelopment authority or does it stay with the city in terms of the development portion of that. So I just want to throw that out there for my colleagues that it is coming back to us, but I would ask the administration to start having some discussions so that we can kind of figure out in terms of master planning, getting funding, because, you know, a master plan is probably going to take about a year to get going. You know, by the time they go out, they take, you know, traffic studies, they do some market analysis, you know, they're going to, they're going to put this report together and then we're going to have discussions. So I don't want to wait till the last minute when we're talking about two, three years of a project still ongoing. If we can have these discussions in conjunction with the projects continuing to move forward, then once that conveyance comes over, we're ready to, to kind of get the ball rolling and not wait another year, year and a half for potential development of that area. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel seat six, Counsel.
Hi. The only question that I have is just for the general public to know, where the road is now on Deval Street and we're getting all this property on the side. Is the road going to remain there or is the property going to abut to the land that we have?
So Deval Street heading north, which is on the easterly side, that runs along the gas station, along the building at the corner of Turner, bottom of President Avenue with that plaza, up to Lindsay Street, you know, that it heads over to
Brightman Street.
It basically stays where it is, shifted a little bit so that we can provide, you know, grass strips, shared paths for, you know, it's double lanes 14 feet wide and landscaping strips, different types of turning lanes to take a right onto President Avenue or to take a left onto the other side street. So in general, the way things logistically work now and look is pretty much exactly what you'll see later. Again, as I stated previously, a lot prettier, you know, and a lot newer.
And the road that runs along Point Gloria?
Same thing.
To me, I went to meetings and I said, I think that that road should be moved so you have all that land there. So you're going to knock down all the overpasses and we're going to have a green strip in the middle and we're going to have a road on both sides.
Correct.
But we're not going to connect it to what we already have. So people are going to be crossing the street to get to whatever venues we have in the middle. I said that then, I guess they didn't pay attention, but, or it wasn't feasible to do or what have you. But I think that land where, where you have Heritage State Park, Veterans by Centennial Park, if you had all that land up and then had the road on, above it
Yep.
to go back and forth, makes sense. So now we're going to have people crossing the street
So what, so what will happen is, again, as I stated, there will be four cross-sections, four roadways that bring you through. And those are all both streets and the shared use paths.
And pedestrian turns and pedestrian lights.
When the conversation came up and I was only part of it at the very end, if you were to, like what you're saying, is to shift all of Deval Street, the side you're talking about, that runs in front of the Cove, over to the west side, you would now be creating parcels of land that either connected or disconnected the existing parcels to the roadway system. So we have existing landowners that have frontage along a right-of-way. If we were to take or create a parcel of land, let's say, let's look at Commonwealth Landing, for instance. So if we took that road at Bicentennial Park and at Commonwealth Landing and pushed that part of Deval Street over to match the other side, you would now be creating a new parcel of land that would now disconnect Commonwealth Landing from the roadway system. So we would, now we would have these longer stretches of road to get to the existing parcels. And then we would be adding potentially land to Bicentennial Park. So we would be creating a bunch of smaller parcels that would be, that would interrupt the existing uses that are along the waterfront, rather than be able to, be able to create larger parcels in the interior. Basically creating not just a waterfront stretch, but basically, you know, another viable area of, of blocks and different streets, creating as much street frontage as possible, which promotes the amount of development that can take place through there. So rather than minimal street frontage with long narrow lots, we now have very, you know, great amounts of frontage with more, with longer parcels of land that run along the actual traveled way. If there were, if there were, if there was nothing along the waterfront in existence, then I agree potentially some of what you, of what you've commented on would could be
I just think we're spending a lot of money doing that and I don't like to have to cross streets. And there you're going to have a place that you're going to have to cross streets and I know we're going to put pedestrian crosslights and everything else, but you're still haven't hugged it all together. That's my opinion.
Yep.
I said it at the meeting. I went when they had it down at, at the Heritage State Park with openings, because one of the openings, one of the businesses, it wasn't wide enough, brought that to their attention. That was kind of rectified. It's like you can't come in as a Monday morning quarterback when nobody's been to the meetings and heard how things are going along the way. But I, I hope it works out. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I think that there's a way to get roadways there. Even when they did the new job that they did, all of those things should have been underground and they didn't because why? It was going to cost more money. So because it was going to cost more money, you know, you do it halfway. But I think if we're going to spend money on this or if the state's going to spend money on this, that if it's a little bit more that we're spending, but it makes sense in the long run, that you do it. Maybe having, at some committee meeting or something, having DOT come down and doing their, a little slide presentation that the public is able to see on. And I think getting the administration to work on whatever master plan they're going to do and getting us all in the loop right away is better. We've been trying to get discontinued piece of land. I've talked to you about it with that, that attorney from DOT, it's been since 2001.
Right, it's tied up in land court.
2020 really.
For a while, yeah.
And 2001, and still not even a letter that we can clean up an area. So my faith is a little diminished.
Well, I can tell you this, and Val and I joke about this often, for 28 years, I had no love lost for Mast DOT.
Yeah.
I was always at the other end of the permitting spectrum.
Right.
And it was never easy. But what, since I've been here, I can tell you how
Difficult things are and they're complicated.
How well done. But when you're dealing in a system like this, there are some hurdles and things take time. I can't tell you how wonderful the relationship has been. And I tell her all the time.
Oh, I think Mary Dewar, DOT is phenomenal. I mean, there's, I've worked with great people there.
We are a different organization than we were 20, 30 years ago.
No, I've had really positive interactions with some people from DOT, but I'm a, I'm kind of a doer. If this needs to be done, let's get it done. And sometimes the wheels of government work so slowly
It's hard.
it frustrates the hell out of me. I'll be honest with you.
We understand.
I mean, even this project, it was a long time.
But thank you for coming down and sharing what you did with us. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counsel seat four, Counsel Liberty.
Hi, thank you. I just have two questions and I apologize if I, I missed this. Who owns the land? Is the state on the land and they're going to give it to?
It is owned, that's where the, that's how the conversation started.
Yep.
So it is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be conveyed to the city through some form or fashion, whether that's to the city directly, whether it's disposable by the redevelopment authority, that has not been determined yet. Those talks are really just fledgling beginning now. So what I can offer is that if you would like to get, you know, a regularly scheduled update on these things every three months or four months, or you all have my cell phone number, feel free to reach out to me. And if I don't have the answer for you, I speak to Val on a, on a continuous basis about this project. So don't be afraid, even if it's the most foolish question that somebody asks you and you don't have the answer, don't be afraid to call and ask. But if you would like to get, you know, a scheduled update, whether it's even in writing or something like this, don't be afraid to ask. On every, every week, I said, you know, we meet as a group, 30 people. Val, for instance, comes down from Boston every Tuesday. So this worked out
Fairly well.
Other than the time of day, but, so we had a meeting this morning at 10 o'clock to go over the entire construction schedule down to, you know, where's Comcast line on this street? And I sit through all of these things. I try to pay attention to it all, but some of it doesn't concern me.
Mr. Dagan, who is, who do you say comes down? Val?
Val came down
Okay.
every, comes down every Tuesday to meet in person. So they have a field office over on Weaver Street and there's probably, oh, I don't know, 20 people that attend that in person and then a number of others on Zoom, whether they're, I mean, it was the bridge demolition contractors, the, the design engineers, multiple consultants from the construction company, multiple DOT. It's, it runs, I'm very impressed with how it runs. That's all I can say.
We do get the every two or three week email updates, so we've been
Right.
following along on that.
It's tough to follow those. I mean, I get, you know, six a day because I have technically six emails that get flooded to me from people that have left in the past, but they're still in the chain and they get forwarded. So I'm hitting delete all day long and saving the last one. So they, but they do do a good job. So what I was going to say was, in that meeting, there is a section that we get to that has to do with public outreach and what's being done at that time. Specifically today, it had to do with some, some different street closures that were happening, like on Lindsay Street in front of Mesa 21, where they're working on CSO and sewer work. There's, so the utility part of this project, to be honest with you, is really the biggest part of this project. And that's not pretty. No, nobody likes to spend money on stuff that's in the ground, but that's really what needs to come first to be able to build on top of that.
Good. But once it comes to us, it's the city's intent that it's going to go through the redevelopment authority?
Potentially. I, I offered that. The redevelopment authority is in the process of seeking some grant funding to have a master plan created for that area, to look at the different types of uses and how many of those uses can we accommodate in that area.
And then the only other question I had is, I know there was some overview shots on the website and online. Is there any sort of a map available that shows like where those four cross streets are going to be?
Absolutely, yeah. I have them in my office. You can see them online.
They are online?
Feel free to come by. I've got a, a plan as long as this table that I show to people all the time, so feel free.
I've seen like the, the big aerial shot, which is
Yeah, but so, so you can look at it, you know, on that pretty picture or if you just want to see, I have one that Val provided maybe a month or two ago, that basically just deals with traffic markings and where the signals are. That makes it very easy to see because you're not looking at all of the utilities and it's basically looking at, you know, a street on a nice clean plan so that you can understand what happens where.
Would you be able to email that?
What's that?
Could you email that?
Yeah, I can. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
It's a little overwhelming when you open it to be able to zoom in and find where you want to look at. I mean, it's, it's a lot. So either way, but yeah, I can.
Yeah, if there's something you want to see, like let us know, let Dan know and we can get you the plan of whatever you're looking for. We'll try anyway.
I'm just curious about the streets that are going to go through and where the travel lights are.
Yeah, so they'll be, again, yeah, I don't think you were here. So it'll be
I did hear it.
You did. So yeah, so Brightman, President Avenue, Turner, and then where the U-turn is now, that'll be a 90-degree corner. And under that section, and you probably haven't all seen it, but that southerly end where the U-turn currently exists now, that's where there'll be, there'll be park settings, some plaques. Under the bridge itself has some artist's display spaces. Again, I can't take credit for any of these things. They were all in the works prior to, to my coming here. But when, when you look at the things that are being incorporated into this, this isn't just reconstructing the street. That's, that's what my office does, just boring repavement and new sidewalks, but, which we get excited about anyway, right? But, but this will be otherworldly when this gets completed.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I'm, we don't get, often get a chance to do a project like this. Like, again, we're DOT, we're, we're like Dan just said, we pave streets and put up highways. So, you know, this is a unique design for me as well and I'm excited about this project. I think it's going to be a really wonderful thing once this is all done. We are at the 100%, almost at the 100% level for the design. I think that's coming in in July, mid-July. So we're working and we're working right now with some, even some redevelopment that's happening right now, making sure that we've got what we need for those people to get their, their utility services and their curb openings and whatever they need. So, you know, the more, Dan and I, like he said, we talk a lot because I need more information coming from the people that are actually doing some redevelopment as well now. So we get the plan right and we don't have to redo stuff.
You don't, you don't want somebody coming in, you know, I mean, we have our five-year moratorium here, right, where we have the ability to hold people off. We don't want this project to get done and then one of these developers or some of the landowners says, oh, I've decided to do this, but all the work that's just been done in front of my property, the driveways, the trees, the walkways, I need to change it all. So we're So we're trying to incorporate at least the larger ones that are existing parcels into this, this 100% design. And I, and I know I throw a wrench into a bunch of what they wanna do often, even if it's down to how wide is this grass strip? Where does this tree go? And they take the comments and they incorporate that into the design. So it, it's, it's been great.
That's great. It's nice to see that it's, I mean, you can really see it move along.
It's moving, yeah.
Yeah, it's moving. They're moving. They're, they're ahead of schedule, honestly. Um, they're moving very, and it's, it's all been good, actually. I have, I have no negatives either. Like, the city's been great. The, the contractor we hired is, is, um, very easy. He's pretty easy to work with. Um, you know, we don't let him, we don't let him get ahead of himself, do we, Dan? But we, but it's been, all in all, it's been a pretty, pretty smooth project.
It's still early.
It is early.
This is still the honeymoon phase.
We have a lot, the complicated part is gonna start, like Dan said. The utility stuff on this job is tremendous. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of stuff in that road and it's all gotta get moved.
Everything's getting moved down to, I mean, you're sitting, I'll hear them talk for 45 minutes about we need to go find out where all of these Comcast lines currently are. Not only where they are, but what elevation they're at. Because new utilities are being woven through and run alongside and...
Yes.
Because we've incorporated a lot of CSO sewer work into this project to make it even more complicated. Um, so they've had to accommodate that design, you know, into theirs as well. So every day, that's why you, when the project goes out for bits at like a 25%, the, the, that's the level that the plans are at. And then as they learn, once the contractors pick, they're out there digging holes all the time trying to figure out where what is. And dig safe isn't always right and it's certainly not accurate enough for what they need. Um, then it gets to a 75% design and then now they're approaching 100%. And then, then you can, but, you know, the 100%, a lot of it's not stuff that you won't, you won't need it for another year, but it does need to ultimately get onto a plan so that, you know, the whole project can move forward.
What is the timeline?
Another three years?
Three years.
Yeah.
Yes.
I yield.
We've been lucky because it hasn't rained.
Yeah.
Yes.
Although that makes dust, but, but again, that's, you know, that's one of my things and they've been on it. You've, you've seen the water trucks and the misses that they have down there, even when they were demolishing the bridge to keep the concrete dust down.
Thank you.
Dan, I have a quick question. Years ago, that area on President Avenue and Deval Street, just before, there was massive flooding there and we had that big floodstorm. Are they changing sewage? Is everything gonna go?
They're changing everything.
Is anything gonna go directly into the Titan River or not? We're gonna have direct discharge, like Providence has it, certain areas.
Well, so, so we have a number of current direct discharges that go through there and a number of those are being upgraded, reconstructed, um, other CSO parts of what Paul Furlan's office has been handling.
Okay.
You all know how much money that cost and it runs through the whole city.
Yep.
So anything that he was going to be mandated to do through this power for improvements is part of this project.
But there will be some direct discharges relative to the Titan River from rainwater.
Of course, just like there is now.
Okay.
Whether we're, we're adding additional detention areas, whether they're underground storage chambers like the tunnels, not tunnels, but more linear, uh, things like that. But yeah, so all of the, I, I see all the time, they're trying to get different cut sheets and details drawn for the different cover replacements, or yes, all that's being done.
Thanks. Councilor C. Two?
Yeah, two questions and a comment. First question, um, is there still the intention ultimately of putting a satellite station for the train on the south side of the Braggard Bridge?
So it, it's often gets thrown around. Um, I honestly, I don't know if that will happen. Again, I'm, that, that's a, that's an MBTA thing. My guess is they would see what is the demand for, for the current station and see how that works out, but it is still on the table. So I deal a lot with MBTA and all kinds of new laws that have been created about zoning around the stations. And on every document I see, there is still the potential for that, that second station.
Secondly, has there been any discussion surrounding potential pedestrian bridges, um, along the line? I mean, Council Pereira, you know, not wanting to cross the street as...
Well, so the design, the way that it was done, now let's, let's look at Route 18 through New Bedford, for instance. They had originally had a few pedestrian bridges that used to go through. Then when they came through, uh, and reconstructed Route 18, they got rid of a number of, of the bridges that are there. They did not include or add additional cross streets. This project will be improving and adding the additional cross streets. So at this time, there would be no room or really honestly need for a pedestrian bridge because the, the distance between street to street, you know, Route 18 is a very...
It's not that great.
It's, it, it's not. I mean, I don't like, I don't like to walk.
So essentially it'll compensate, is what you're saying.
It's not a long walk. It's compensated by, by the at-grade crossings, yes.
Unless it's a step ladder.
And then my only comment is, I mean, obviously there's more to, I mean, we've been going through years and years of construction, demolition, construction, changing the roadways. So I only wanna say that I live in the extreme south end of the city. I don't think any portion of the city's been more isolated and had more detours than people living in the south end, especially if you're trying to get to the, go north. And I have to say, I've always been so impressed at how well thought out, well planned and well advised people have been. So as much as we felt isolated, it was, you, you just could easily navigate yourself around and, and I mean, there were just no hiccups, no, I, I've just been really impressed how somebody can actually sit and be, have such a well thought out plan. So I just wanted to let you know that.
I guess we can take credit for some of that.
Thank you. Yes, we can.
I can't take a credit for a lot, but we, again, we work on this, it's every day.
Yeah.
We see that there's a traffic issue. So when, when the, when the elevator portion first closed and we had those two or three lanes merging and trying to get back down to Deval Street, we looked at what happened the first day and we sat, we talked about it, we made lane changes, we did different signage and, so yes, there have been many improvements along the way. Um, but again, super responsive on DOT's end. I drive through the property three times a day on purpose as part of my, I, on my way in, I make the loop. At lunch, I make the loop and on my way home, I go and see, you know, what's happening.
Well, just so you know, it's noticed and appreciated.
I appreciate that.
With that, I yield.
On that comment, I just wanna say, Mr. Agger, maybe you should go over to Jefferson Street and see how they're making out that school and maybe you can help out the traffic patterns down there, cause there's a lot of, maybe you should go down to Jefferson Street and fix the traffic pattern that we're having down there with the new schools, cause...
One step at a time.
We, we built a lot of new schools in the city and every time the Durfee High School when that got reconstructed, it's always a disaster the first few days and it, it would sway out, but I, I agree. You ought to be commended for the work you guys do and those traffic patterns make life easier for everyone.
Thank you.
Councilor C. Three, Councilor Kilby?
Yeah, just, just by way of comment, um, maybe I've been around a long time, right? But I remember as a child, that being in the neighborhood. It was a neighborhood where homes and, um, it was, it's just, um, it's a once in a lifetime change that's happening. Maybe two lifetime, maybe two generations. So, um, I think it was a great resolution and I think Council Pereira, uh, made a great point in terms of maybe tabling this and in the future, having a presentation to further clarify, um, further clarify what exactly is going on so we can be more educated where constituents ask us questions. Um, but, um, I just got, just got, received that thought in my head in terms of when I was a little child and, uh, Brighton Street was thriving. They had a movie theater, they had a Chinese restaurant, they had, and, and where Lindsay Street, is it not Lindsay? Well, Deval or whatever, or St. Max's provisioners? From there, all the way to, uh, the shoreline, there were homes.
Yeah.
It was an entire neighborhood, so...
I used to go to a little boatyard down there where my, my grandfather belonged to. It was elevated, that's where I learned how to swim.
I try, when I drive by, I think of that, pops in my head in terms of, um, how many homes were, were displaced and so, um, but all the way from the Braggard Bridge, all the way up to, um, the new Memorial Bridge, well, you know, that, it's, um, I think it's gonna be wonderful. I really, really do.
Yeah.
So I, as Council Dion said, I really congratulate everyone. I pay attention online with the emails that we receive and, um, it's just a monumental, once in a lifetime, um, project. And, um, the, the current mayor, Mayor Coogan, to be honest with you, and we, we're very, very fortunate that at this point in time, we're getting that type of project down here. And you just see the investment coming. You see the, the, um, you know, restaurants, very excited. You see, you know, the, um, the housing. Um, it's just, um, I can't wait. I hope I'm still around, I can't wait.
I just want y'all to remember that as you're going through the painful next couple of years, cause it's gonna be painful.
It's a real, it's a real shot me.
We're gonna try our best to continue.
It's a real shot me on, for the sake.
To do what we're doing.
It really is.
But, um, and just, if there's ever a question, I mean, obviously you can get to Dan, I'll leave my card. Um, but also we have a, um, an email on that website that, that, that mailbox is checked, um, hopefully every day, but if not, at least two or three times a week and we'll get back to you.
This is the type of thing that elected officials dream for to happen, so.
It's a great project.
Now, Dan, um, Mr. Agger, I give you a lot of credit. You, you were such a great hire for the city. Your professionalism, the way you, you know, present yourself, it, uh, it's just, you know, hope you stay around for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. President.
Want to have a wrap-up question? Councilor C. Six?
Yeah, I just think my colleague in seat number three was, um, misinformed or didn't hear correctly. I didn't suggest that this be tabled. I just said in the future, if they wanted to bring a presentation here, that you can talk to the council president, he can schedule that at any time. Thank you, Val, we appreciate it.
Yeah, this is for, we're just holding a discussion on this, so it'll still be here and we can reschedule it again.
And what I, what I can offer is, we only got this invite Thursday afternoon. So I, I'd like to thank Val for juggling her schedule. I mean, I'm here mostly, mostly council meeting, so she juggled to get here, but if you would like to plan for, you know, a presentation or even the ones that we, the public ones that we've already done, um, we can bring, we can show it, you can ask questions as you're watching it or...
I think it's good to do that and the council president can put that in on the agenda at any time.
Sure.
How long is the presentation? I mean, we don't need to go in about...
Ten minutes?
How long is it? Do you have the presentation video? How long is that going?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Yeah. All right, so we can do that in the future. We can, at another time, we can have you come down and do that, that'd be, that's fine.
Yeah.
Give us more insight. Um, the only reason we scheduled Thursday, that's the council agenda. We put the agenda together and, you know, we don't do it two weeks ahead of time, we do it four days ahead of time and the holiday weekend made it beefed up a little quicker, so that's why. With that, um, there being no further questions, I wanna thank you for coming down and answering all the questions. I appreciate it. It was very enlightening.
Seth, thank you.
Motion to you, finance.
Motion to you, finance has been made in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance is now adjourned. Regular City Council meeting will begin in five minutes. Seven o'clock.[1333.71] Regular City Council meeting will come to order.
Okay.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuit to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit, transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor, and in order accepting gift of framed paintings, sketches, and miscellaneous items for the Florida Library.
Motion to accept a gift?
Second.
Motion to accept a gift, and the order has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Councilor, seat six, Councilor Vice President.
Can we just send, uh, Rosemary Campana, uh, thank, uh, thank you?
Sure.
I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is the Retirement Board's Notice of a Public Meeting Regarding Cost of Living Adjustments.
Motion adopted, placed on file.
Second.
Motion to accept the communication, placed on file, has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Of the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion for committee on ordinance and legislation.
Second.
Motion for committee on ordinance and legislation has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Regulations at a meeting held May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. This is an auto repair shop license for Robert Farage at 851 Globe Street.
Motion to adopt, committee report.
Second.
Motion to adopt, committee report has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted. This is an auto repair shop application on behalf of Mario Larrero at 830 Globe Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be accepted and placed on file. This was a communication from an anonymous resident regarding taxi companies.
Motion accept, placed on file.
Motion accept and placed on file has been made in seconded. On the motion, Councilor, seat six, Councilor Vice President Pereira?
I have a concern about this, uh, letter from, not just this letter, but that other people, um, have had complaints about taxi service, they're not getting taxi service at night, et cetera, um, because there's been issues, and they can't get their drivers for at night. And one of the companies that I spoke with, one of the cab companies, said, "It's very difficult with the Ubers and Lifts that they have. People will call Uber, they'll call Lyft, they'll call a taxi, whoever gets there first, um, leaves." You know, the, the person gets in that vehicle, and so they're having some difficulties with that. And Ubers and Lifts, they don't have to pay and get medallions and do any of that stuff, um, like taxi cabs do. So taxi cabs are really taking a hit, and, you know, may be, uh, in such a financial strait that they'll just shut, you know, shut shop, which is not good. Is there a way to send this communication to Committee on Regulations, or, I don't know if it would be ordinance to talk about the licenses of taxi cabs? I know that Town Taxi has reached out to me, um, with concern over how medallions and everything is distributed. And then when we had that, where we only gave out so many, remember we had a vote a couple of years back? I think the city clerk remembers, and Council Pelletier, I know, was very involved in that.
I remember.
Do you remember that? Um, and then other people got medallions, but they're not using them, they're not doing anything with them. I, I just think we have to look into this, 'cause, because the people are not getting the service. I know, um, I've spoken to Mr. Robelot as well, um, he's shared, you know, some concerns.
Make a motion for committee on Regulations?
What committee you think would be most appropriate?
Do you want to just, want to just file a resolution, Councilor?
It would be Regulations.
Hold on.
Our yields for Council of Liberty.
Councilor, seat four, Council of Liberty.
I would just suggest that, um, if you want to put in a different resolution, this was in Regulations, and it's an anonymous letter, and it's really just speaking about, they think that people answering the phones are rude, it's nothing about medallions or anything like that.
Yeah.
It's more like a human resources issue.
We can, I can put in, if the clerk can write up a resolution, we can do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Just that I think it needs to be looked into, 'cause there are concerns. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Libbidi, you yield?
What's that?
Do you yield?
Yes.
Councilor Kilby, do you have something you want to mention?
No, thanks.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Motion has been made in seconded to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. These are handicapped parking.
Motion for emergency preamble?
Motion, so moved, second.
Has been made in seconded, roll call.
Motion emergency preamble?
To adopt the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadeen?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes. Motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt.
Has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. These are the scheduled amendments for the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Board.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading, with Councilor Dion opposed. This is the proposed ordinance, um, uh, cost of living adjustments for elected officials.
Sheer number 11, not number 10.
10.
No, 10.
Salary increase.
10 is cost of living. 10 is salary increases.
Motion, uh, Mr. President, if I may, motion to take number 11 out of voter?
Hold on, Madam Clerk, which one? Number 10.
They're not, they were numbered wrong in my packet. Um, we can do the, we could go in order.
Take 11 first, please.
Number, we can go in order.
We'll go number 10, that's fine.
Okay.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the salary increase for school committee members.
What was the increase?
Um, it would be the same amount as the city, uh, city council, which is $16,091.06.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Second.
Motion passed through first reading has been made in seconded, roll call. Uh, do you understand, Councilor, Councilor Washington?
Yeah. Um, I was initially, can I speak on this?
Sure.
I, I, so I was initially, I had so many phone calls after that meeting on this from constituents, that were so upset that we were going to double the salary. I, I, you know, when you look at that, I wish, that's, I don't see that before us today, 'cause when you look at what was sent to us from school committee member, Mr. Aguirre, of that they haven't had an increase since 2003, it does look pretty alarming. But when you look at it from the public, and I got many phone calls, because, you know, I had gone back and forth on it, that it is doubling their salary, 100% increase, I think a little bit over, um, that it's just, it's not sitting well with the public, um, and people are sitting much better with the cost of living increase, and I just, it's just people were very, very upset about that, and so, um, I hesitate to, to vote for that. The public was, uh, very vocal about that to me since that last meeting. So with that, I yield, Council President.
Councilor, seat three, Councilor Kilby?
Thank you. Um, when Mr. Aguirre was here, who, School Committee Aguirre, who I have a great deal of respect for, okay, um, I made the comment that it's worthy of discussion, and I think Council Pereira made the suggestion that, let's get some input from the school committee in terms of what they would like to do. Forgive me, if I'm wrong, forgive me, but I don't think one school committee member thinks this is the appropriate thing to do at this point in time.
You're right, Councilor.
I'm totally in favor of a compromise here on the next item, item 11, to restore the cost of living increase. Um, and like Council Washington just stated, I too have been, you know, getting some calls, and I don't, you know, to some individuals, in the hi, in the history of this council, my, my experience, some individuals say, "I've gotten a lot of calls." For me, a lot of calls is false calls, okay? So, um, it, it, especially with union negotiations that may be ongoing, um, that type of salary increase, I struggled with it, although it, it, there's an argument that it, it makes some sense, but, uh, too much at one time. Um, so, I, I supported Mr. Aguirre in terms of wanting to educate myself and, and think about it, whether your discussion, I, I don't think it's appropriate at this point in time, so. I will definitely be voting for the next item, though, for sure.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, seat one.
I think Mr. Aguirre has made his point, he's accomplished his goal, um, and let's maybe do this gradually, so. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I haven't received any calls, um, even if I received calls, I, I think I'd have the same statements that I'm gonna make today, um, that I think when we start talking about equity and parity and doing the right thing, uh, to me, right now, it, it would be supporting item number 10. Um, I don't care what any voter or resident would say about doubling the salary, when you start boiling down, start looking at the increases that individuals have received on the school department, coaches themselves, just, a football coach, a basketball coach have, has received $10,000. They're coaching a season, right? It's a defined timeframe, you've got a school committee who's year-round. I'd also maintain that, from a legislative party, we've got limited responsibility compared to the, to the school committee, which is an executive branch, uh, form of government. So they've got more responsibility, they have hiring authority, they've got disciplinary authority, they've got negotiations. The city council only does, uh, passes ordinances, so law for the, for the city, and we make appropriations, that's it. We have no jurisdiction, uh, for an executive, any executive powers, um, so when you start looking at the importance of what the school committee does, I, I don't think there's no reason why they shouldn't be compensated similar to the, to the city council. Um, that's just my, my standpoint. Uh, the increase is coming from the school department budget, we're not raising taxes for it, it's part of their appropriation, so there's no impact, uh, to the voters, even if it's 100%. Nobody was kicking and screaming when they weren't receiving cost of living adjustments, and the city council was receiving cost of living adjustments. So you go back to 2003, we presented that at the, at the subcommittee meeting, um, in 2003, there was, there was a stop on the cost of living adjustment, and their $7,200 stipend continued from 2003 all the way until 2010, that, um, while the city council was receiving cost of living adjustments, the school committee didn't receive cost of living adjustments. So when we start talking about parity, we should make them whole, and when we talk about that, that gets them to $10,000, and then we're talking about a $6,000 increase. You've got athletic, athletic coaches that are making more money and getting bigger increases from the school committee. So from my standpoint, I think it's well worth it. Uh, Mr. Aguirre came here as a, as an, as a resident, even though he does, uh, serve on the, on the school committee, he was very clear that he was, he was coming as a resident, and he actually advocated, um, to have other members, uh, other, other board and committees, uh, be looked at in terms of what they're, they're getting paid. Um, you know, I, listen, people can laugh about Mr. Aguirre coming here, uh, as, as a member versus a, a, a school committee member, but that's the reality of the situation. It's not a popular decision, you've got an elected official who's saying that they're looking for stipends, so, um, you know, I, I think if you were to ask school committee members on a personal level, whether, whether they think they should see, have that increase, they would say, "Yeah," but politically, because it's not politically expedient for them, they're gonna take a step back, and they're not, they're not gonna do it. We don't know who's, who's gonna be on the school committee. To me, it makes sense, it should be $16,000 in conjunction with the, the city council, I'm gonna support that, so. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, just, I, I don't understand when the councils were getting an increase and the school committee was not getting an increase.
2003 to 2010, city council was getting cost of living adjustments.
Is that right, Madam Clerk?
And, and the school committee was not.
Shouldn't they?
I was, I was on the school committee in, in 2006, it was $7,200, this is the same amount.
Yeah.
And so you were there, right? $7,200, they never received a cost of living adjustment.
I don't think, and the mayor hasn't either, or the council?
That was 2010 it stopped.
2009.
So what I'm saying is, from 2003 to 2010, the city council, between that time period, the city council received cost of living adjustments, the school committee did not.
Are you positive about that?
Positive, 100% positive.
Can you look at that, Madam Clerk?
I don't remember that.
Was that our last meeting?
Yeah, he's correct.
Would you say, Madam Clerk?
I said, I will look. I don't have the court.
There's your, Madam Clerk.
I'm gonna take his word for it, he should see.
He passed it out.
But, 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 just to give you people a history on this, Council Pelletier filed this resolution years ago.
2010.
It was for all elected officials, school committee, city council, and mayor. So why we would get a cost of living increase, I don't think that, we received this cost of living increase, I don't think the mayor received the cost of living increase. If there was something with, with insurance increase for councils that were on the insurance plan, maybe, we'll have to look into it, the clerk's gonna look into it, 'cause she doesn't think it happened either. Um, we'll look into it, but as far as I can remember, I, I supported that resolution that Council Pelletier put in back then, that froze all salary increases for all elected officials. So I don't know why, why one body would get it and the other one would get, wouldn't get it.
All I'm saying is, it, it happens for school committee.
We'll have to find out.
That's all.
Madam?
Yeah, I could be wrong, I wasn't on the city council at the time, but I believe when Councilor Pelletier, um, made that motion, and the city council approved it, I believe that freeze occurred in 2010. 13 years ago. I could be wrong, but I believe it was 2010 when that vote was taken to freeze the salary of the city council.
It wasn't just the city council, it was.
No, it was all elected.
It was all elected officials.
Yeah, but, yeah, right.
So.
No, but the point of, point of order.
But right now you're discussing the cola with the city council versus.
Right, so there wasn't a time when we were getting something that we shouldn't be getting, and they were getting something, they, they, we were denying them anything, it was, if they didn't get a cost of living increase, it's not because of the resolution that Council Pelletier put in prior to that.
No, the point of order was, the point that I was trying to make was that, during the time period of 2003 to up until before that resolution was made to stop all elected officials getting a cost of living adjustment, the city council, I mean, the city council was getting the cost of living adjustment with the mayor, school committee was not seeing any adjustments, any cost of living adjustments, their salary was flat at $7,200, year over year.
That's because the school committee wouldn't vote for a salary increase for themselves? We didn't vote for it.
No.
It was a cost, why, why wouldn't they get it?
Can't speak to that.
It makes no sense why they wouldn't get it if anyone else is getting it, it was a cost of living, just, we didn't vote on any salary increases for the councilors back then, I was on the council.
Listen, I, and maybe, maybe it's school committee members didn't know there was a cost of living adjustment, you know, new members came on, they don't, they're not aware of it, I'm not sure.
Maybe they were getting it and not realizing it, correct?
No, there wasn't, so, I, $7,200, right? That's, that's, that's how much I got, and that, that's still there.
Well, we'll have to research it.
Came in handy at the time.
Yeah.
My kids were small.
Councilor, will you take the point for a second?
I've just, oh, I, are you, uh, can I speak?
Sure.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't think I was able to vote on this, because of my daughter being on the school committee, however, because this has only taken effect after the next election, I can be part of the discussion and vote on this, I just wanted to make that clear.
Could you come up here?
Sure.
Please. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to be clear on this, um, years ago, when Council Pelletier put this in place, I voted for it, 'cause I agreed with it. Um, back then, the city was in, in tough shape. We, um, fighting 90 cuts, we were doing a lot of things back then, and it turned out that, when you run for public office, I don't know anyone that does it for the money, whether it's $6,000, $5,000, $3,000, as a selectman in other towns that have equal responsibilities, that school committee members and city councils combined, $3,000 salaries these people get. Um, and some elected officials get more, whether you're a, a county commissioner, but the fact of the matter is, nobody does this for the money. If you do it for the money, you're in the wrong field, you're in the wrong position. I don't know any of my colleagues that do it for the money, I don't think they do, I know I don't do it for the money. And I think that, if you meet once a month with all the responsibilities that you do, and you feel that $6,000 doesn't compensate for that, then you shouldn't be a school committee member, maybe you should run for something else in a different position, or you should take a different job up, if you're doing it for the money. If an increase is gonna make you stay in the school committee position, where if you don't get the money, you're gonna leave, then I think you should just leave, if, if it's about the money. Same thing with the city councilors, I don't think that, I think I'm perfectly fine receiving what I receive, and I've been doing it since 2010, I'm not looking for an increase, I think the pay that you get to do this job is adequate, and it's sufficient enough. So I'm not gonna be supporting this, um, and, and I've spoken to the school committee members, and some people can say privately, they'll say one thing, publicly they'll say another thing, well, they've told me in private, that they don't want the money, they don't approve of it, and, like I said when he first came before the council and referred this here, he took it upon himself to make a decision, which he has every right to do, that he thinks and he believes he deserves more money, and maybe he'll get it, I don't know. But I don't support it, I'm not gonna support it, um, I think the position pays what it pays, and when you hold public office, there's a lot of things that you have to consider, um, how much time you're gonna dedicate yourself, the scrutiny you're gonna get, the criticism, the time you have to put into work, and so, there's a lot of different issues that you have to think about and live with yourself. And to say, you know, "We should double our salary," I don't agree with. Cost of living increase, maybe I could agree with that, I, I still wouldn't at this point in time, because I think what we make right now is sufficient. There are people that work in this building for a long, long time, that don't get that type of increase, and there's people that work outside this building. We, we're paying people 16, 15 an hour, do public work, um, public work, and we struggle to give them a raise, which is a sad state. But with that being said, I don't wanna go on, everyone's spoken, everyone knows how everyone feels, and let the votes take place, but I know this, Council Pelletier was sitting here today, he wouldn't support it, um, I'm not gonna support it, and I think that, if someone's not happy with the pay, I, I've, you know, looked at different jobs, and if I don't like the pay, I don't take them, I think everyone here looks at other positions, if you don't like the pay, you don't take the job. Um, it's plain and simple, no one's forcing any of us to be city councilors, no one's forcing anyone to be a school committee member. So it's every two years, you take the job for two years, and then you decide whether you wanna continue from there, for what it pays and the benefits you get from it, and also the pain and, uh, suffering here from it as well. It works both ways. With that, I yield.
Anyone else?
Roll call.
There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
This would be to pass through first reading, and this is the salary ordinance. Counselors Kadeen?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
La Libbidi?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Carrera?
No.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
President Kamara?
No.
The motion fails. Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 23rd voted to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor Dion opposed. This would be the cost of living adjustment.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Roll call.
For passage through first reading, Counselors Kadeen?
No.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Carrera?
Yes.
Reposo?
No.
Washington?
No.
President Kamara?
No.
Item number 12 is a proposed ordinance. This would be amending the section of ordinance that relates to property owners keeping the